All right, now we have Rick Asprel, County Commissioner. Garden Valley in Loma.
Hello, everyone hear me? First of all, I wanted to start and thank the Guardians of Freedom for putting on this event. And also, I see a number of candidates that spoke last week as well, and I want to thank them for stepping up. I know what it means to step up for what you think is right. And so I thought I'd tell you a little bit about me to start. My wife Sally and myself retired here to Garden Valley. We absolutely love this area. And I was approached by one of the commissioners that informed me that his wife was ill. He was not going to be able to do a second term. He might not even be able to finish this term based on her illness. Now, that commissioner is my brother-in-law Ted Holmes. And he told me what is going on in the county, what needs to be done, what he has tried desperately to achieve. Just as we've heard earlier, everything isn't right. But what we can do is try to do our best to make it the best. So I'll tell you a little bit about my career and why I feel I'm the best candidate for this position. My first full-time job for a decade was Officer in Charge of a Paramedic Rescue Squad in Chicago. So day in, day out, Chicago as a paramedic. I take my hat off to the volunteers in this town, this county, that, and that's what the majority are, are volunteers that want to go out, get the training to help you and I in our house when we need help the most. After the 10 years in the fire department, I, it was time to switch careers. And I actually went into heavy civil engineering construction. Started off as a laborer, went to an operator, worked my way up to superintendent, and got a real good taste for construction. After that, I spent the next 30 years working in the engineering sector in government. And that was basically running the inspection section for construction projects in excess of probably a billion dollars over that 30 years. So that's a little bit about my background and why I feel it's important and for this position. Is I had projects that were 10 times the budget of Boise County. And I looked at the budget, after being asked to take a look at a number of things, I started attending meetings that the commissioners love in the quarters or chambers in Idaho City. And I immediately saw a need for something I feel that right now, the current system doesn't give we the people, you the people, us the people. And that is a friendly work. Everybody I talked to throughout, I've driven thousands of miles to this county talking to people. And the same thing keeps coming back. We don't know what's going on. We don't know till after it happens. There's something wrong here. There needs to be more transparency. So I want more transparency. I actually want to be able to give everyone here the opportunity to have the agenda a week before the meeting, not, you know, a day or two before that type of thing. Where you have time to make arrangements with your schedule. But be able to look at the agenda, be able to actually go online, whether it be your computer, your telephone. Through COVID, Zoom meetings were the only way government continued to run in most states. And I have a problem with the fact that you cannot do that. You'd have to drive down Alder Creek through a foot of snow or a foot of mud or whatever it might be, or the long way around. I've been doing that and I understand it's not giving you the opportunity to see what your government is really doing for you. And I think that this idea of transparency and giving you this opportunity, I hope it engages more people to get involved. Instead of watching three people talk about something, one makes a motion, another seconds, and then there's a vote, whether it's "I, I, I" or "I, I, no," or "nay," whatever it might be. If there's constituent input, it should be tabled. It shouldn't be voted on. It should be looked into and give you the people the opportunity to make comment if you have problems with something like that. After the transparency, and if we can, we can get, I will put this on a Zoom meeting as soon as we get in there. I've heard we've got a historical building, I've heard this, I've heard that, supply chain issues. I can bring my laptop to one of those meetings and put on Zoom meeting. That will go to archive, so will you have the opportunity to make a three-minute public statement in front of the commission, no different if you drove the 60 miles to Idaho City. That would be archived, and if something's said down the road, you can go back, you can listen to it. If you can't attend it live at 9:00 in the morning, which is when they start, you can watch it at 4:00 in the afternoon and it's stored on the website. And I made this statement, on a couple of occasions, I didn't see it in the minutes. And I actually went back and asked again to speak to, you know, why isn't this getting into the minutes? People need to hear this. So that on the transparency and some of my core beliefs is starting with my faith in my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And I pray for guidance. I pray, should I run for this office? I've never run for a political office in my life. I've listened to a lot of talk radio on the commute home and got a little upset at a few, but I've never run for political office. And when I saw the, what my experience in the paramedic, and any EMT out here, first of all, I should stop. Thank you to the veterans. I see a lot of veterans that showed up. And we wouldn't have this opportunity. I think we see what's going on in the world and there's countries where we don't have an opportunity to make a choice between candidates. And I thank them for that. But anyhow, getting back to my core beliefs, Jesus Christ, my Savior, honesty, transparency. I believe that we need to obviously defend the Idaho and the federal constitutions, our Second Amendment. I'm 100% behind the Second Amendment. And that's one of the reasons why Idaho is on my list of states to retire from. I actually Googled, and what is the state most likely to stay red? Well, this is five years ago. And it came back Wyoming, Utah, Idaho. Unfortunately, if you Google that right now, it's changed. We're not as high up on that list. I want to provide our children with education, not Marxist indoctrination. They're trying to raise your kids in our schools. They're trying to raise our kids in the schools and take away the rights that parents should have to install the family values, the morals. And that, I wish I had 20 minutes because I could go into the library, just visit lately and saw what I found in the library. But anyway, I'll move right on through this. Other is to protect the unborn babies. And I think prayers for the justices and everything that's going on there. No more COVID mandates, no more government control. That's all that works. And defend our God-given rights. And they are God-given. And I see a government that wants to become our God and take him out of our lives. That bothers me a lot. Now, what would I like to do? Well, you heard in the beginning, but I'd like to take my experience as a paramedic and any situation that I get into or I witness or comes before the commission to triage it. And that's very simple. Any EMT will tell you or any medical personnel will tell you how to triage it. First of all, how serious it is. Is it? Can I make the decision on my own? Do I need to talk to a county attorney? Do I need to talk to a department head before making the decision? I've done this in putting together departments for local government. And you have to be able to communicate beyond just the commission level. I've talked about wanting to upgrade the county EMS. And I'll tell you, there's, again, I'm not taking down or putting down anybody that's doing it because they're great people. The most qualified for this position, I feel, is myself with the experience that I have. And I've talked to senators, I've talked to candidates for senate. They want to, we want to hold meetings on a quarterly basis at all because every problem can't be solved in Boise County. We've got to go, we've got to get grant money, we've got to get the rural grants that are available. And there is so much out there, and we've been lacking in that for a long time. I think we'd be a lot further ahead than we are right now if we actually would go with that type of attitude. The population is up to 8,100. It's what, 20,000 on the weekends or on the summers? We're getting paid to provide services for 8,100 people. That's not the case. I've talked to senators, I've talked to the candidates, and they're actually telling me that there are ways to make what I want to do happen, and they're all for it.
Sorry.
And I say it's anyway to take 10 minutes and try and tell anybody what you want to do.
No, it's hard. Questions?
I got two.
Okay, Steve, you can.
I need it.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned it, honesty, integrity, and transparency. Mr. Holmes has sold his house in Loma. He has purchased a house in Vail, Oregon. He is using your address as his residence.
And he can stay with his mother. My mother-in-law lives in the lower section of our house, it's an actual separate apartment, 1,300 square feet. And he's welcome to stay there as long, and his wife too, if she needs to stay there. She's more than welcome.
So what about his house in Vail?
That's a vacation home that they, ultimately, if his wife recovers, they plan on spending whatever God's given them on this earth to spend.
Okay, so he's living with you. That's fine, that's good. When you mentioned about the, as a commissioner, impacting the education system, how can you do that when they have their own governing board?
Well, I've already done that. I've had, I'm sure many people here have had lunch with someone that's been on a school board. And if you get propane delivered to your house, you might be talking to one and not even know it. But I've talked with members of the school board. And thank God, we have the caliber of people we do. Because there are grants available to schools that it's not until you get down to the 40th or 50th page of the agreement that you find out what the strings are. And when you find out those strings, it's not going right back to the Marxist indoctrination, forcing our kids to question the doctor's decision at birth that they were a man or they were a boy or a girl. And it gets into that, it gets into sex, it gets into graphic pictures that I believe parents should have the authority. Their kids just, I was told because they have a library card, they can go in and get this type of pornographic stuff no matter what their age is. I think it should be up to the parents for books like that and that decision to be made. Now, like I was saying before, I wish I had more time. My wife was a teacher for 23 years, and she can tell you how they slowly but surely try to get this stuff in. And how slowly but surely your kids start disagreeing with what you have to say at home. And it just didn't happen overnight. It's been going on for a while. But we can talk to the school board. What I said about talking to senators, legislators, I don't see any of that going on right now on a county commissioner level. You can't, you, we can't, I mean, the federal government couldn't get a printing press and print money. We can't. We've got to go where the money is. And when the population is going like this and your budget stays like this, I mean, it's common sense. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, you're going to deal with the school situation by talking to the board members of the school.
I said, no, I'm encouraging everybody here to be active.
But as a commissioner, you've got no authority to tell the school district what to do.
That is correct. And I will say that, in a way, yes. And that is through your state legislator and your district aide senator. And absolutely, this is going right to the top, and that's where all the grants are coming. And that's where these books and these ideologies are coming from. So yes, but more importantly, to get people involved.
The gentleman in the back?
Yes, sir. You suggested there might be some more funds for this county. You would explore getting, could you tell me were those funds coming from the state or are they coming from the Fed or where does that money get to come from?
It would be a combination. And one of the first questions I asked after attending a few commissioners' meetings, looking into the budgets, looking at how they haven't grown over the years with inflation, the turnover rates in all the city or all the county departments, because we are the lowest-paid county in the state. You're hiring people at an entry level, you're training them on the taxpayers' dollars, and all they do is turn around when they get to a midpoint level where they're trained, go and accept a job from another county with housing allowances. I mean, no one, no one that wants, I mean, in this area, a county worker can't afford a home if they could find one. The wages are horrible, and the turnover is horrible. I'm glad it's summer right now, we don't have five feet of snow because you're going to find out in Garden Valley, you only have one person on the road department now. Everybody's leaving. And I bring that up, and I'm looking for it in the minutes, I'm looking for it in the newspaper. And it just, it seems like anything that's not wanted to be mentioned doesn't get mentioned. So I'm up here mentioning it, and I thank all the other candidates that are here because I know what it's like to look at people and try to explain. All I want to do is make it better. I don't want to change what we have. I wouldn't have moved here if I wanted to change it. But, I'm sorry, I get too into it. All right, to answer your question. But there's federal, there's state, there's all type. I mean, the first thing I ask, where's the grant writers? I mean, where are the grant writers plural? Well, we're thinking about hiring a part-time grant writer. Okay? If you had started this 20, 25, 30 years ago, our county would be in a lot different shape right now. And it is available. I can spend $250 for a six-month period, myself, as just a citizen, and actually search grants with four or five buzzwords for six months. And then you get a stack that you have to go through, and there's requirements and timeframes and all that. But I'm actually almost thinking, instead of part-time, why not put out contracts to companies that actually get rewarded for what they bring in? Not just a wage, not just an hourly and possibly benefits, that type of thing. There's companies out there, the only way they stay in business is by running just the way the government should run and the county, like a business. They either bring in the grants or you get a different grant writer. It's that simple.
Anybody else? We have a few. Okay, I'm going to start closest to me. Hold on, I'll come back to you, sir.
I'm going to pick one of the three questions I have. But the biggest one is affordable housing, you just kind of barely touched on. And so our county's been very, I guess, open-minded to people living in RVs. We've been in our RV for years, almost finishing our house. There's a lot of people, like, I saw a new teacher was looking for a place to park an RV or something like that. Idaho City a few months ago, they're going to talk about banning living in their RV, living in city limits. And I heard so many people showed up, they never even discussed it.
Now, this is on your own property?
Was it? Yes, on your own property. Yeah, because a lot of counties across the country do not allow you to live in an RV past like a year or something like that. And that is an affordable housing solution in our county.
Well, I have a response to that. And first of all, even in my HOA, I have a neighbor right now that just moved in a beautiful, probably a 50-foot long trailer, or I should say RV, it's more like a residential home. And they're talking about it's going to take them at least a year to get their house built. Well, I just got to my wife to provide this. I ordered kitchen cabinets to remodel my house. It took three and a half months to get them. And the third-party transport that transported the cabinets to my house tried to turn them back into sawdust. They were in pieces, doors falling off. It took another month and a half to get them out. So in a market like we have, and I'm used to construction, I'm used to this, the ups, the downs of construction, and in government, what that does, hey, in a year's time, in the perfect world, you can build that house. Now, I think if you can show a reason that you're making due diligence at attempting to build your permanent dwelling, yeah, I think that there should be some understanding and some leniency that way. Now, I would also have to check with the zoning codes and see what the currents are, talk with attorney, talk with legal counsel, and find out that I just made a mistake by telling you that. But by the same token, as soon as you lose compassion, you shouldn't run for office. Because I still think that everyone running for office here that I've met is trying to help people. So I would think that there should be some leniency if you can prove that you're trying to do your best to get a home back.
There's a lot of people in our community that have been in RVs for years on end and have no desire to build a house. They have their property, they own their property, they own their RV. And some people, like renters, are being pushed out right now. Our workers, our longtime residents that are renters, don't have a place to live. And some are moving out of the county because of that. But there are people here that have been in RVs indefinitely. And I think that should be allowed. It's your property, it's our property, it's our personal property now.
Okay, and I'm talking right now about bringing in mobile manufactured homes to offer to county workers, to keep good county workers. I mean, when the snow falls, I tell you, I've gone around 21 before the blade, before the pile hits it the first time after heavy snow. And you know what? I can't, every time I see one of those guys, I want to buy him a cup of coffee. Because they make our life possible right there. So when it comes to RVs, when it comes to trailers, that, I would take that up before. And you say that when a number of people showed up, they wouldn't even address the issue?
Yeah, that's what I had read, so that the city council didn't even bring it up that night. So I haven't heard, but maybe somebody else knows. But it was like last winter night in Wisconsin. Isn't that a city issue? Yeah, that's a city issue, but we don't want the county to.
I think the county's got the same issue. And like I said, if I was going to be fined or penalized because I didn't get my kitchen built, other than by my wife, I'd want to look into it a little bit and look at the laws. I hope that answered that question.
Joey, you want to add something to that?
Yeah, I just want to add something to that. My husband and I have been talking about a lot that there's no affordable housing, especially like for teachers. So we're short teachers because why would they come here to teach if they don't, if they can't afford a home? And the only thing about RVs, which I really love because we have one too, but is there often not a winter, they're not winterized for staying in this kind of temperament, you know, temperature and everything else, climate. So our idea, which we can't do because it takes somebody with a little bit of bucks, is to make a tiny home community. I mean, you know, those homes that are actually insulated well and meant to be, you know, in this kind of weather and allow the teachers to live, I don't know how to do it, I can't say it. But we just keep saying, why can't somebody just do that?
You know, you want to know why things get done in government? Because people actually open their mind and their mouths and demand things get done. And I'm there to listen, I'm not there to cam pitch. All my life, I've been in, basically, in civil service. And when I see a better way to do things, it still includes compassion. I mean, I've been down on my luck, I was a single parent for a while, and I know what it's like to raise two kids by myself. So everybody's got a different story, and when government loses its compassion, we should lose some of that government.
I will say there are a lot of businesses up here that if they didn't have employees that could live in trailers, just fifth wheels or whatever, they wouldn't have employees, I'm one of them.
Could I add something to that?
Sure.
The last commissioners' meeting. The superintendent of Road and Bridges, I can't keep people up here, there's nowhere for them to live. Can we put two RVs in on the county property? Well, zoning says this, zoning says that. Okay, there's, you've got to look at the laws under one. But can we put at least one? Yes, you could put one on there. Well, problem solved for one of the two people. But you've got to look at each situation. I don't know that everybody wants RVs parked in their driveways, on the street in front of their houses. I mean, you have to come to a point where you're looking at reality and what you're allowing. But there's got to be some compassion. And like I say, people's voices, to me, I'm so tired of hearing, I make a motion, I second the motion, I, I, and let's say a nay out of three votes. They're making it difficult for you and me, because I'm still you, to have a voice. I want a voice where when something bothers somebody, you know what? You don't vote on it, you table it. You don't have to pass everything so you can get out at noon for lunch. That's not what people are there for. But what I'm getting at is, needless to say, people talk, it will make people, it'll make people listen. And when people in government don't listen, like I say, they shouldn't be there to listen.
And I appreciate, my whole career was working for county, and most people here know me. With that being said, I have a couple of questions. Everyone complains about county wages. I started out at county, I retired while I was working in Canyon County, 34 years. So we all complain about county wages. Everyone wants to raise wages, she wants to provide them a home, she wants to do a lot of things. Well, all of that takes increased taxes. And I tell you what, our home that we purchased here in here, though, has tripled, quadrupled in value, which is going to be nice if we ever sell it. But with that being said, the taxes, the county commissioners are taxing people out of their homes. Again, I don't know how to do all these things without raising these taxes. And those taxes seem to come on the backs of us homeowners. That's my one comment. My other comment is, how long have you been here? Six months?
A year.
Oh, yeah, June, in June.
Well, we've had family trying to get us out of here for a decade.
I realize that, but you just purchased in June and moved recently. When did you move?
Uh, June.
June, okay, thank you.
Anyway, I thank you for the question because it gives me a little more time than that 10 minutes. I didn't really have stopwatch going on. And I'm on a fixed income now for the first time in my life too. There are, like I said, with grants and with bringing money in to take care of, if you have a million-dollar budget to fix roads, if you can get a grant that matches that, even a dollar to a dollar, now you've got $2 million worth of work to do. There's budget, I should say, there's grants for everything out there, and we can get that money. I don't want to raise anyone's taxes, if anything, I would be, and here we go again. This is now, we're looking at, I would rather go with a Proposition 13 type of thing. Because if you've looked, or if you've seen any of my signs that are still standing, it says, Christian, Republican, Fiscal, Conservative. And what that means is, very simply, I'm retired, I have a fixed income, I have so much in my checking account, and as soon as you reach that level where you can't spend anymore, you can't spend anymore. I used to tell my mom as a kid, can I get this, can I get that? She goes, we don't have the money. And I said, you've got plenty of, you've got plenty of that yellow paper you can write. But that's not the way, the government, the government has to balance budget. That's why when I went before the commission, I asked. I see these millions of dollars getting pushed forward every year. And I was told that the term I use, surplus, I've always thought of something that isn't in a budget and it's just waiting for a catastrophe is a surplus, or call it rainy day funds or whatever you want to call it. But there's millions there too. I think that, I also, I said, when's the last time we did a salary survey here in the county? Well, we'll have to get a firm together and see about doing that. And I said, when you're the lowest paid in the state, you don't need to spend any money to find out a salary survey. Everyone is already using all of your numbers to compare theirs and find a midpoint for negotiations. But we can't have a county that runs if you don't have county employees that are dedicated to their job. They're going to stay here, and all the cost of training them actually pays off because they stay. And they become, I mean, they retire. Now, did you retire here in Trump?
I retired out of Canyon County.
Oh, okay, okay. But all of these other counties, I mean.
This guy retired from Nampa.
And you really don't have to.
We have other people that have to talk. One more question, because I promised this gentleman.
You're right about grant writers. When I was county commissioner, we had a grant writer. And he got a lot of things done. We got a fire department in Loma. We got a fire department in Loma. My claim to fame was paving the road to the dump. But the question I had, that they have, they asked already, how long you been in Garden Valley? And why do you think in five years, you know enough about Boise County to be a commissioner?
Well, I've done a pretty close study of what's going on here in Boise County since I've been here. And I know your involvement. And let's put it this way, I can do it better. I can do it better and I've done it elsewhere. I would not have the education and the experience if I, I wish I was homegrown. I wish I came from Garden Valley as some of the other candidates have. I wish I knew where those big bucks were that you can barely reach the horns on either side. But all I'm going to say is this, I have the education and the experience to do what I'm up here asking each one of you for a vote for Rick Asquith on May 17.
Okay, thank you very much.